Okay, we're suspending the rules. Yes, we are.
Okay.
Welcome to the Biloxi City Council meeting, Tuesday, June 20th, 2023, 1:30 meeting. I need a motion to suspend the rules.
I move.
Move by Mr. Lawrence. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Any questions? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, five zero. Motion carry. Carry.
To the consent agenda, we're removing 5J resolution for a master subscription agreement with Interview Now Software, adding item 5P, resolution authorizing an agreement with Brown, Mitchell, and Alexander for point cadet nearshore, adding 5Q, resolution authorizing a contract with Fort Barry Roofing for repairs at the old library, adding 5R, resolution rescinding resolution number 39423, purchase of real property with Mississippi Coast Coliseum, adding 5S, resolution authorizing a contract for purchase of real property and administrative settlement with Mississippi Coast Coliseum and Convention Center. Adding 5T, resolution authorizing submission of the FY 2025 grant application to the Mississippi Department of Marine Resources for construction of a pier and docking facility at Oak Street. Adding 5U, resolution authorizing submission of an FY 2025 grant for Mississippi Department of Marine Resources for reconstruction of Lighthouse Pier. And to the routine agenda, we're adding a docket in the amount of $53,244.55.
I move the agenda as amended.
Move by Mr. Lawrence. Agenda as amended. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Any questions? All in favor? Five zero. Motion carry. Presentation agendas. Mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. We've got a, uh, a couple of longevity pins to pass out in the proclamation, but want to welcome everybody in this, this good weather we're having. And I guess especially remember our, our friends and neighbors in Moss Point, they had a little hit from the, uh, tornado, uh, yesterday afternoon. Hopefully we'll skate by some of that this afternoon. But let me, uh, ask, first of all, uh, we're gonna do the longevity pins. First one. Chris. Alright, Chris. Thank you, man. Congratulations. Well done.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay, very good.
Next, okay.
Next up, the anonymous Jerry Creel, Director of Community Development, 20 years.
Okay, fine, very good. And last, but not least.
And finally, 30 years, Rhonda Bailey, Bailey, Center Supervisor Two at Parks Recs Department.
Very good, Rhonda. Well done.
Ms. Rhonda, come on back up, Ms. Rhonda.
Congratulations. Chief, come on up, and we're gonna do this proclamation, right? You ready?
Yeah.
Alright, is he here?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay. Chris, you ought to come up too. Come on, man. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's an honor for us to present this proclamation after your life in Biloxi and life and, and the PD. Whereas, after devoting his time and energy as a law enforcement officer with the Biloxi and assuming the responsibility of essential for the safety of his fellow citizens for 45 years, Captain Louis Michelle Saldau has decided to begin the next phase of his life, retirement. Whereas Lou began his career with the city as an auxiliary police officer, achieving the rank of Sergeant and then Lieutenant before being hired on full-time August 11th, 1983, as a patrolman. He soon advanced up the ranks from Patrolman One to Patrolman Two, Patrolman Three, into Sergeant in 1997, Lieutenant in 2008, and Captain in 2018, a role he held until retirement. Whereas Lou has more than 200 certificates of training and qualifications in his personal file. He holds a certification in crime scene, property and evidence, FEMA juvenile and juvenile investigation and DARE instruction. Whereas Lou has received more than 40 letters of commendation, including Employee of the Month, 1984, March 1985, November 1986, Officer of the Month for April 1983, November 1986, March 1989, and take a breath, uh, September 2003, and Officer of the Quarter for October 1978. He was awarded the Medal of Merit in 2006 for his efforts during Hurricane Katrina, and then the Designable Service Medal in 2014 for his achievements in property and evidence unit, and the evidence unit. In 2018, for his efforts during the train bus crash, and in 2019 for Robert McKeithen investigation. Now, therefore, Andrew Fofo-Gilich, Mayor of the City of Biloxi, Mississippi, on the occasion of his retirement and in honor of his great, great service as well for serving as our longest sworn officer, do he about proclaim the 20th day of June, 2023, as Captain Louis Michael Saldau Day? Congratulations. Yeah, I do. So I, I can't tell you how blessed this city's been to have Lou all these years. Uh, he's been my right-hand man several times throughout the years. I've depended on him heavily, and he's one of those guys you could always depend on. Didn't matter what the circumstances were or what the outcome was gonna be, Lou was gonna be right there with you to help you any way that he could, and we're gonna miss him, miss him greatly.
Lou, it's been a pleasure working with you all these years. You always, wow, trying not to lie. You've always been a pleasure to work with. You always got us anything we needed, anything we asked, even if you had to pull out your own sewing machine to make it. We appreciate that.
Chief, thank you. Uh, and that concludes my report. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Have for everything.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you, and just to note, uh, Natan, Councilman Nathan Barrett and Councilman Robert Demmon, they are stuck on I-110 Bridge. They'll be here as soon as they could. They had a bad car accident out there, so preferably they'll get here safely shortly. Okay, uh, we're gonna move on to our council report. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, we had, uh, they opened up the Todd, uh, big ass ball field Saturday, and like a little, the Biloxi Bombers, and nice crowd. It was good to see all that action around there again like it used to be. But it was a nice little tournament. Turned out great. Everything looked great. They did a good job fixing that field up. Second thing, we went to the Juneteenth, you know, before Fofo got there, when he brought the rain. We had a good time until he got there, but that turned out nice. Sat on the corner. That was a good thing. Nice crowd there. I noticed today, Mayor, we got 15 code violations on, and from the community development, and the biggest complaints I get are all the violations that the city's not in care of. Like I tell you about Howard Avenue, and you said you're gonna take care of it, so do we need to hire 10, 15 people just to clean up our streets? We can't be writing everybody else up and not taking care of the city property and the city right away. So I mean, I think that's something we need to hire extra people, contract workers, whatever you wanna call them, and get that done. And on, uh, the water fountain on the, by the White House, uh, what is, what happened to it? It quit working? The, uh... Yeah, I thought you were gonna check on that one.
It was working.
So, anyway, we gotta call on that. And the Forest Avenue Pier, are we still waiting for FEMA and MEMA to bid on that? Or it's got closed in front of us, all marked off. It's a Forest Avenue Pier.
Yeah, I think there's, there's...
They made repairs on that pier already once.
There's some other things that we do have because I think it's at the end. There, there's some issues, and we'll take a look at that. I'm not sure why.
Yeah. Now, just wanted to, we looked, I talked to you more about that extending the walkway to, towards IP. And you look at that, I told him, we're working on that.
Right. There's a question right at the, at the little bridge and where it takes the fork and goes, goes across to, towards IP, right there where it makes that turn.
Alright, that'd be another, another good walkway. Alright, thank you.
Alright, Ms. Newman? Okay, I'm gonna skip, come back to you, Mr. Demmon shortly. Uh, Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, just one thing for, for my colleagues up here. There's a document in front of your seat, and I left two at the administrative table there. And it deals with item 4A that's coming up for a first reading, and it's, there's several pages. There's a cover sheet. But then the, the middle page is a document that was referred to during the Planning Commission hearing and is referred to in the, in the transcript, but there wasn't a copy of that document. So, Mr. Creel dropped this off, and I told him I'd get a copy to everybody if that, if that could just be noted and maybe made a part of the record when we come to the first reading or when we, uh, when we adopted it the second reading, which is a couple of weeks away. But, uh, but that's it. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Tisdale, Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, I, I wanna piggyback off of what Councilman Lawrence said about, uh, the Biloxi Bombers, uh, inaugural tournament. My, uh, six-year-old grandson got to play in that tournament. Had a great time. Uh, I think they had water balloon fights afterwards, and, uh, they just had a good time playing baseball in Biloxi. So it's really good to see the community really come together on a grassroots effort like that, and hopefully that'll be the example for other fields that need, uh, some repair as well. Um, the other thing, uh, Ms. Levitard, is she here today? Engineering? Is anybody from engineering here today? Uh, I'll go ahead and add it to my report. Uh, on the engineering report, I just need an update on, uh, a couple of streets that were slated for paving, uh, Skeet Hunt and Hickman. Uh, I didn't notice that. Hickman may have been on there, but I, I didn't notice Skeet Hunt, uh, was on there. Uh, it's slated for paving. I think Biloxi is doing the entire project. So I just didn't notice that on her engineering report.
It, it is on the list, Councilman. I assure you.
Okay, I'll, I'll look it over again. I just didn't notice it. Uh, in the detail, it may be labeled something different, but, but I'll look for that. And then there's, uh, well, I'll, I'll let Councilman Barrett talk about the tree limb, but I got, uh, a call today about your tree limb. They just need to identify the owner of that property, that the tree is, has an overhang. I think you reported that, and I think Arbor Rist is ready to go cure that situation. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Glavine. Councilman Barrett?
Do you know what street that was on?
It's one you reported. Call it in.
Shorecrest.
These are gonna be Shorecrest, Oaklawn, or, um, John Lee, something around. Okay. Um, just a couple of things, um, referring to what Dr. Tisdale said. I know that I'm part of the problem right now on, on, on these signs being everywhere, and, um, and it, it does junk up the city, and I see, and I, I talked to Jerry about this as well, but, um, and I looked it up today. I see this letter that we got from Vincent here and looked it up today, and, and I don't know that it does anything to change an ordinance, because any, um, any political sign that's put out, if anyone challenges our ordinance, our ordinance does not stand up. Supreme Court has made a ruling, um, and it's, the, the ruling is, um, I'm pulling it up real quick. I have it right here. Reed versus the Town of Gilbert. And it basically says that ideological signs, political signs, temporary directional signs relating to a qualifying event, any sign that is content-based cannot be regulated based upon the message that's on the sign. And so we're, when we have a specific ordinance specifically for political signs, that's content-based. Well, political signs falls under First Amendment, especially on private property, falls under First Amendment rights, and so regulating the size of a sign, the message that's on the sign or anything like that, Supreme Court has ruled, um, and this ruling was in 2018, basically ruled that cities and states do not have the right to regulate a sign based upon the message that's on the sign. And, and so I understand our purpose, because we can't just put political signs out year-round. I mean, there's places, I was out today putting some up for our governor, and there's places where there's 872 signs on a corner, and it's junky looking. I understand. I don't know what the answer is, but I, I guess my point is that if anyone challenges this ordinance, our ordinance is not gonna stand up, because the Supreme Court has already ruled. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was asked to look at this a couple of weeks ago. We did that on the, when it comes before you next week for the second reading. We're taking all that out. I've got the proposed language. We're just gonna state a political sign. This is what's not, uh, this is a sign allowed without a sign permit. Political sign advertising campaign for elected office, provided the sign is removed within seven days after the election date. Taking out the, uh, the limitation on when you can put it up, taking out the size of the sign. There are cases that say it's reasonable to make somebody take the sign down after the election. So, uh, instead of trying to substitute it now or anything like that, since the Planning Commission has ruled, we're gonna have the, uh, this rewritten to state what the Planning Commission did and what the city attorney recommends.
I think that something that we could put into this or a sign ordinance in general, any sign, that a sign has to be maintained, because over, anything that's out over a period of time, you know, gets tore up and stuff, and that's what really starts to look bad, is when you have signs that the frames are bent and they're, you know, tore up and things like that. So I think that that could be something that could be added to, to make it more aesthetically pleasing, um, but, um, you know, you know, like I said, I don't, I'm glad that we made that change, because ultimately it won't stand up if someone were to challenge the ordinance. Um, other than that, um, the, uh, I've got, you know, I talked to Mike yesterday on the, the tree limbs. We had a couple more calls on those. And Mike Hostly and his team are continuing to do a great job of taking care of things. I don't know if Christie's in the room or not.
I don't see her.
Um, but if, um, I, we recently did a repair on the Washfayard Bridge, Washfayard Road Bridge.
Emergency repair.
Yeah, and I, I rode through there yesterday, and that thing is still, and I don't know what we paid for it. I think it was 30-something thousand dollars. But when you're heading, um, I guess, from John Lee, it's still a very, very big bump. And so I don't know if that's something, we've already closed that contract or not, but if, if that could be graded or something or, or, um, but it, it's still a very big bump when you're, um, going. I don't, I think that would be maybe north on Washfayard, onto that bridge where they, where they did that repair on that side. It's still a very pretty, pretty significant bump when you hit that bridge going from the concrete, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
I had one more thing I missed.
You wanna go ahead? Okay, go ahead.
Alright. Thank you. I, I had one more issue that, that I missed. If I can ask, uh, Mr. Creel to, uh, comment on this. Uh, the Hickman property, uh, continues to operate a business, and it's under, uh, questionable circumstances. Hauling in scrap metal, other debris, uh, several containers. Uh, it was three containers, and it was six and more. In addition to the already reported, there's two or three parcels that, uh, that, uh, they have, I guess, construction vehicles and heavy, uh, industrial vehicles on. I'm also concerned if they have proper proof of insurance, uh, beyond the question if they're operating a legitimate business, uh, properly. Uh, can you comment about the state of that at all?
Sure.
Okay.
The ordinance has a specific procedure that we have to follow whenever someone is in violation. Uh, you'll recall, you may recall five years ago that they were operating the business on a different piece of property. And we took them through the process. You know, we have to notify them that we believe they're operating a business that lost its grandfather status. We give them the opportunity to bring us documentation or come in and meet with us to show us something to the contrary. They did come in at that time. They provided us with some documentation. Me and Attorney Terry Steele reviewed all that documentation and did not believe that it proved that they had a legitimate right to be there. So the next step was to tell them to either shut the business down, to change it over to a business that is allowed in agricultural zoning, or to file an appeal. At that time, they chose to file an appeal, and we went through the, uh, Board of Zoning Adjustments and Appeals. We presented our case. They presented their argument. The BZA ruled in our favor that they had lost their grandfather status. So from there, they filed an appeal to go to court, which is what happens if you disagree with the decision of the, the BZA, then you had filed an appeal to go to court. They did that, and they lost. The city won that case. So what happened, they were shut down for a while, and then now all of a sudden, they have opened up the business on a separate piece of property, which essentially means that we have to, had to start over. And we've gone through the same process with them, and we've gone through all of those steps. And I sent them a final letter of determination based on some documentation they sent us that I didn't believe carried any merit to it, uh, giving them, uh, 10 days to either correct the problem or file an appeal. They came in Friday afternoon, uh, late Friday afternoon and filed an appeal. So it will now go to the Zoning Board of Adjustments and Appeals. I believe that we have a strong case, just like we did before. And then from there, you know, if the BZA votes to deny their appeal, then they have the right to take it back to court again. I wish we had the authority to go out there, you know, and shut them down, but we don't, we can't do that, because our, our ordinance says that once an appeal is filed, that stays all city action. So we're just having to go through the process. We are working on it. We've been working on it very diligently ever since the time that they put those out there, and I think that we'll get another court order that shuts that down.
Just a couple more questions, Director. There seems to be little or no fencing, uh, around the property. Uh, one question I would have, did they go to the DRC with any kind of plans for drainage, for fencing, for, uh, the required egress and ingress, uh, uh, pavement that they have to, uh, put down with heavy trucks coming in and out of the, uh, area? It just, I, I, I don't understand it. I, I hear what you're saying. I'm still trying to understand how somebody could get away with just stream, you know, stringing us along and, uh, operating a business month in and month out, uh, without the proper protocols, so...
I, I agree. I actually agree, but, uh, we're, we're following the steps to make sure that we have the, the legal decision to shut them down.
Okay. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Demmon?
Thank you. I, just a couple of updates. Ms. Bell, if you could give me an update on where we're at with the, the Pops Ferry Park? Getting it open and usable?
Yes, I went by there this morning, and I saw there was, I think, two light poles that are left to be taken down. And once those are down, we'll go ahead and open those up.
For day use?
Yes. For day.
Okay. And we're still working on, are we, have we, have we refused, returned, rebid the, the light project for the park?
I think we're working on, um, other options for that. There's several options we're gonna look at and look at the funding. We're still waiting on some quotes and some pricing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Bat, uh... Just a couple of things. I'll start with the easiest one first. How far with this weather, how far back have we pushed the paving schedule?
Um, actually, the paving schedule has been, we, we're actually gonna have to rebid the entire paving contract. We've had some issues. We've encountered some legal issues with it, so we're having to start over. So all of our paving is on hold until we can get that contract rebid, unfortunately.
That is the most unfortunate of news I've heard in a long time.
I agree completely. I agree completely.
Alright, well, maybe this will brighten up my day. I, I, I saw some, some articles and things that the, um, Corps of Engineers were considering allowing us to either remove or replace the, the submerged aquatic vegetation that's holding up our, our, um, dredging projects.
Right, right.
Can you give me more information on that?
Yes, uh, so we haven't been through the process yet, uh, but Seymour Engineering has started the, they're, who have our contract to do our debris management plan. Um, they've done, started it for Jackson County, so we've asked them to go ahead and start it for us as well. We have a, um, a new permit, not a new permit. We have a, an existing permit that we're trying to get, uh, put back in front of the core that they denied, uh, that had submerged aquatic vegetation, and that's in the, um, I think it's in your ward, Councilman, the Holly Hills Sunrise Core area. Um, but we're, so we're working, we're moving forward with that one first to see, to kinda get through the process and see what we need to do, and that's in the works right now. So hopefully soon, we'll have some good news on how to get around Savs.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. And to close out, uh, my report, prayers out to Moss Point, and Mayor Bill Knight, good friend of mine, Alder Mandarius Williams. We pray for that city who went through a little bit, a little bit of a storm last night. Same thing, George took most... George took most of my report with the Todd Mies, uh, part. Those guys, those parents have done a great job revitalizing Todd Mies in Back Bay. You know, that's in word to it. And I'm proud of what those guys have done with the Todd Mies part, getting that kicked off, the Biloxi Bombers. So I, I really appreciate those guys. And of course, I wanna give a shout out to Ms. Sherry Bell, who worked with us all weekend. We had a great, wonderful Juneteenth celebration. Uh, Friday night with the basketball tournament, uh, Mississippi Power donated, uh, cash prizes for the basketball players. Saturday, we had a great blast. The mayor came out, gave out awards at the town green, and then Sunday wrapped up back at Henry Beck Park with a fantastic, um, great food picnic. So I just wanted to give kudos to all those individuals. And of course, uh, last but not least, uh, Chief Miller, uh, just wanna ask you a question after the meeting about a certain business, and, uh, as far as the signage, I have no comment. That concludes my report. Alright, we're gonna move on to the public agenda. Total of 45 minutes, three minutes per person strictly enforced. Would anyone to my left would like to come up and speak? Anyone to my left? Mr. Whitty, please, come on.
Afternoon, everybody. Um, I think we have made a, a lot of progress, uh, on the, on the ordinances. As I said last time when I was before y'all, that, uh, I had sent some information over to, uh, to Peter for him to review, and, uh, we had just a brief opportunity to talk about some clarification that's needed in some of the, some of the areas. Uh, and just to remind you, basically what I was talking about last time and what he and I talked about, the Coliseum events. Um, it's a little unclear, uh, what happens there with, particularly with vendors and how they're associated with the Coliseum. I think the language somewhat in the vendor area needs to be, uh, worked on a little bit, uh, and I'm also too, and, you know, I didn't get a chance to talk about the, the advertising issue, that there's, the way the ordinance provides, there's no advertising, uh, prior to a, uh, getting a permit, and I mentioned this last time, that we pretty much advertise, uh, throughout the year for, for our event, and, uh, some of the other events probably do some of the same, I would think. Uh, the indemnification, uh, we discussed some of that. Making sure it's such a clear and easily understood demification clause that people can live with. And there was a question about whether, for example, cruising would need seven permits or one permit to do what we need to do within the city. Also, at the last meeting, Councilmember Deming mentioned about passing the spontaneous portion only to give the chief what, what he needs to do with these events that occur, you know, with no planning or, or with lack of notification to the city. So I think that's something to, to look at as well. And then, like I say, my, overall, one of my main concerns too is just, once this thing gets on the books and, you know, what does the future look like for someone having a great idea about an event? And if they come up against an ordinance like this, will they be able to comply with it all? So it could, could put them damper on, you know, future events down the road. So look forward to us having a workshop here after this meeting and talking about these. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Anyone else on my left? Yes, ma'am. Please sign in. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Cindy Arseneau. I'm president and founder of an organization nonprofit called Fixin' the Coast. We trap, we neuter, we return stray cats, homeless cats, unwanted animals that have been abandoned. We have done nearly 8,000 cats in Biloxi City Limits since we started our organization four years ago. We are experiencing overwhelming discomfort with the amount of responsibility our pet owners are taking, allowing their animals to wander the streets, get pregnant and have babies. It's an endless vicious cycle. Our shelter stays full to the point where they can't bring in any other animals, which then poses the problem to the pet owners. What do I do with my animal? I'm moving and I can't take it with me. We are our own worst enemy in some sense, that we are not enforcing or do not have on the books any kind of spay-neuter law for cats, dogs, rabbits, any of the domesticated animals. My agenda is to eventually get that on the books, to require animal owners, domesticated animals, to have their animals spayed and neutered. I hate to say it, but if they're going to leave an animal behind, at least it will be fixed and cannot reproduce. We are struggling. Every rescue on this coast is full. I have 52 foster cats at my house. My friend who runs a rescue in Long Beach has over 150. The dog rescues are pouring with puppies. The only light at the tunnel we can see is to have a spay-neuter ordinance directive law, something requiring our pet owners to take responsibility to stop this cycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arseneau. Anyone else on my left? Anyone else on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone on my right? Anyone in the back of the room? Anyone in the back of the room? Okay. Now, the public agenda is now closed. Going to move on to policy agenda. Ordinance A, Carrie?
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance pertaining to the size of political signs.
Need a motion on it?
I'll move it.
Move by Mr. Barrett, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Good, that's first reading. Ordinance B?
Ordinance to authorize a change in zoning for a portion of a parcel of land currently split zoned from neighborhood business to regional business, to regional business for 12900 Old Highway 67.
Need a motion on that? Ward seven?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that.
Move by Mr. Barrett?
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. We have two.
Resolution to grant preliminary final subdivision plat approval for Point Breeze Phase Two located at 2506 Beach Boulevard.
I'll make that motion.
Move by Mr. Dr. Tisdale. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Any questions? Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, just if the clerk would make a note, I'd like the, just as a budget item for next year's budget, to look at the cost of a study because there's, and I've talked with Mr. Creel about this and Ms. Labata, there, there's a drainage issue on the west, the, the eastern portion of Edgewater Park, which is adjacent to this development here. I just, if you would make that note for me. And I think that's it. But the, Mr. Creel, you had mentioned that the drainage for this project in Phase One is working as it's designed to do. And the city engineers looked at that, I believe. And the project engineer, well, the Elliott Holmes engineer, I think you said, both of them had looked at it and agreed that the drainage plan is working like it's supposed to work for that development. So Phase, Phase Two is going to be, I can't recall how many units, 17 units, and that will complete the build out there. Yet, but that drainage issue still, I think, has to be addressed in Edgewater Park. So I'd just make those notes for the record. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Glavine?
No further comment.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Question, Jerry. These 17 lots that they're building, how much does square foot do you actually have to build the houses?
The, the lot sizes in there are within the 10,000 square feet for each lot. You know, we did this as a, as a PDR, Plan Development Residential. And they're at least, there should be at least 10,000 square feet each.
Each individual house?
Uh huh.
That's one of the, that, that take, you got no problem with the roads or anything?
No, sir.
All done good?
They posted a bond at the beginning of the project because this subdivision was done differently than we, we normally do a subdivision. Typically, what will happen is they'll come in and get preliminary plat approval. And once the council has approved that preliminary plat, then they'll submit their infrastructure plans to the engineering department. They review them. We issue a permit. They go out and put the infrastructure in. And then after everything is put in, they come back for what's called final plat approval. What they did is they came and got preliminary and final plat approval with the understanding that they would be putting in the infrastructure while they were developing the lots. And in order to ensure that the infrastructure went in, they posted a couple of bonds there that are attached to this. So we had a meeting with a city engineer, we, at DRC, we had a meeting with the city engineer and with the project engineer. And both agreed that everything out there is doing exactly what it was supposed to do as far as the drainage goes.
Yeah, because that's the, being where it's located, that's, that's a tough part to make sure it drains properly. And where it drains to, it don't create a problem in the backside of that property.
I agree. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Call for the question. All in favor? Seven zero. Motion, Carrie. Resolution D?
Resolution vacating and unimproved right away between 8:45 and 8:43 Auburn Drive.
Need a motion on that? Ward four?
I'll second it.
Move by Mr. Demming. Second by Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Demming?
It's a straightforward vacation of easement. It belongs to the property owners that are adjacent to it, right?
Yeah. What, what this is, is that, uh, over the years, there had been a push to, whenever a subdivision, for example, was developed, that there would be a partial road connector put in so that the subdivision being developed, when there was property on the other side that was undeveloped, the plan was, is that those two developments would be connected, that have a connector there. But what we found out through years of experience is that either developments don't want to be connected to another development, or that it doesn't work out because of wetlands or whatever, you know, that doesn't work out, that the two would come together. This was a remnant piece of property that was there, that was based on one of those. It has no purpose whatsoever. There are actually houses built on the other side of this one. So it's just one of those things that needs to be vacated, yes.
I have nothing further.
Okay. Dr. Tisdale?
I have nothing. Go ahead. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll call for the question. All in favor of D? Seven zero. Motion, Carrie. Resolution E?
Resolution granting conditional use approval for a short-term rental located at 281A and B Porter Avenue.
I'll move it.
Move by Mr. Lawrence. Need a second? I'll second it. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah. This is the problem we're creating. We're dealing with a group that's been written up quite a few times. It's like Saraloo Group. They do the same thing. They don't take care of the property. I'm sure they're not turning it into a short-term rental. I saw Dr. Seacool building on Porter Avenue. This, this, this group here has been written up seven times. So I, there's no way I can recommend approving this. It's like, like y'all said, you know, sometimes when you do something wrong, they gotta pay the price. And now they're going to take care of the property? That's not good for the city of Biloxi.
Okay. I have no questions on that. Any other questions from anyone else?
I, I just have a quick statement. I had someone reach out to me today, Jerry, about short-term rentals. And they said that they've identified 1,100 short-term rentals listed on Airbnb and VRBO in the city of Biloxi in the 39531 and 39530 zip code. Um, I know that we're not, we don't have that many. I think we're more around maybe five or so.
Right around 400, yes.
And so they said that they're, they've identified, they have some type of program that can identify them. And they said there's around 1,100, closer to 12, it was 1,100 and something, um, short-term rentals listed just in those two zip codes. And they said that didn't even include 39532. So I don't know if there's some type of software we can get or something. But if that is the case, number one, we're missing out on a lot of money. And number two, um, you know, we're, we're, we're missing the mark on regulating it.
I've, uh, I've sit through probably a half a dozen presentations on software for short-term rental. And I finally found one that covers all the bases. It's called Granicus. And we're going to be requesting that. I've already put it into the budget whenever we review it. But this is one that, one of the, one of the challenges we face is that these people who like to fly under the radar will show you the inside of the unit, but they won't show you the outside. So it's a guessing game about how to locate it. But in this software, they have the ability to identify where that place is located. They can also, one of the other things that we run into is that we notify people, you're advertising for short-term rental, you're not zoned for it, you don't have a license. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll take that ad down. This software will tell you when the ad is put up, when it's taken back down, and if it's put back up again. So it has a, a lot of what we've been looking for. And it'll be a great tool for Frederick to use to keep him from just having to surf the internet, trying to find out these places. This company already does the homework for you. And also, uh, with this payment, provides consulting services to us too. So it, it, it'll be in the budget, you know, if y'all choose to vote to approve it. And I would, I would appreciate that.
What's the name of that software?
Granicus, G-R-A-N-I-C-U-S.
Jerry, can they show that they're paying taxes?
Yes, sir. They do, they do have the ability to monitor whether the taxes are being paid. And the representative from the company said that he would be happy to come and do a presentation to the council as we go through budget hearings to answer your questions.
Yeah, because a lot of them, that was the biggest, they were getting away with not paying the taxes.
Yes, sir.
And so it's not creating anything for the city. Just another headache, you know?
This, I think this will address all the questions that the council has brought up about short-term rental over the years.
Council, one of, uh, one of the things that's in progress right now, Mr. Creel and I have been talking about, is a, an ordinance, this change, this land development ordinance language change that's going to be coming to you shortly, that does a couple of things. One, it raises the fee that a short-term rental pays each year to be, to get their permit. And secondly, it requires at the time of renewal that they prove, show proof of taxes paid, or pay, or at least taxes withdrawn by their platform that they're working on. So most of those two, we think, will help us a, a little bit to manage this amorphous number of.
Submit documentation at the time of renewal to show that their taxes have been paid. Now, does that mean that they've paid all their taxes? We don't, we don't know. But I think this, I think this software program will really help us recoup a lot of the money that we've been missing.
Okay. Are there any more questions regarding Resolution E?
I have a comment. I, I have a comment. So on that line, just as sometimes you can designate a, a entity as resident, non-resident, or whatever, would that application fee be different if the taxes are being paid outside the city? In other words, if they, the, the taxes are being paid in Texas, or, or that's where the taxes are going because that's where their company is established, versus it would be a different application fee if we were benefiting from taxes coming into our city?
Yeah. As, as Peter, Abyd, our city engineer, can confirm, as a, a Airbnb owner, getting to the bottom of whether taxes were paid and where they were paid to is not as easy as, as, as it looks. I mean, we can, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, we can, we can, the Airbnb can tell us that taxes were withheld, but I don't think they're telling us which state the taxes were paid to, or which.
Oh, but Biloxi Beach, Jaclyn Wilson, you know, from that workshop we had, she determined that since their, her office was in Gulfport, Gulfport was receiving all of our sales tax. And she did apply with the Tax Commission for a separate Biloxi tax number. And so that's been remedied. And that was, those taxes were roughly 80,000 a year.
And the, the ordinance, the ordinance change that we're, land development ordinance change that we're proposing, asked them to give us their tax ID number at the time they renew their permit. I, I, I said to Jerry not too long ago, we've been in this business now for a couple of years with an ordinance that gives a $500 fine for running per day, $500 per day for a short-term rental that's not permitted. And yet, we haven't fined anybody. So I think that's a sign that we've got a ways to go on putting our arms around this business.
So in this new ordinance, it's going to require them to prove that their biz, so if they operate a short-term rental in the city of Biloxi, we're gonna, the burden of proof that they have a business set up to where we receive the taxes in the city of Biloxi, is that going to be a requirement? Because that would be the property manager, not the property owner. Is that correct?
Yeah. All you can really tell right now is, is we can ask them to show, like through VRBO, they have a spreadsheet showing this has been pulled out and it has been sent to the state of Mississippi. So that's still something, if they don't live in the city of Biloxi, that's something I think we have to drill down to.
So if they have an LLC that's registered in Gulfport or Ocean Springs or Jackson or Slide L, the tax revenue is going to be sent to where that LLC is registered. Is that correct?
If they're paying it on behalf of that LLC, you know, when we had the person from the Tax Commission here, you know, we got some conflicting answers and, and it was something that she had not thought of either. So they agreed to sort of do it where the property is located.
Make it a requirement that when someone comes in and, and, you know, gets approved by, used by right, or a conditional use, that they provide proof that if they're the property manager, or if they're hiring an external property manager, that that manager has a business registered to the city of Biloxi to where we receive that revenue?
They pull a separate business license for the city of Biloxi. When they come in, that's part of what they have to do in order to operate a short-term rental?
I understand the business license, but that, that's for the city. But whenever you have an LLC, if they're paying, that LLC, wherever that LLC is registered, that's where that tax revenue is going to go to, not a business, the business that's where that tax revenue is gonna go to, not a business, the business license is, has nothing to do with the, you know, the, how that tax revenue is dispersed.
That's something we can monitor on the application.
Well, we would have to monitor it and meet with the, with the Tax Commission because the way I appreciate it, VRBO just sends the state of Mississippi $3 million. And then it's, then it's incumbent upon the state of Mississippi to determine, is this, is this location, are they paying it by location or are they paying it by taxpayer address?
If I may, if I may interrupt, we may need to do a workshop on that. It sounds like it because we've got off topic. We're not germane to the subject that we're speaking of. Resolution E, I think we've kind of forgot about Resolution E.
Yeah, let me, let me bring that back up.
Come on, let's, let's get off topic.
Go back to E.
But we need to keep, keep that on.
The reason, the reason I'm saying, just a lot of people call me, live around there, that dealt with Sarah Lou on Forest, and this is the same group. So I'm not gonna pass anything to create another major problem like we had before when they had 20, 30 people living in these houses. And if y'all remember that, for a couple of years it took, before we could tear that house down. It was that bad. And we were already taking down, taking down two or three of homes. So I'm not getting in that often short-term in the middle of a residential neighborhood anyway on Porter. So I still recommend that this is, I'd pass.
And the last time, anyone have anything pertaining to Resolution E?
I do. Is there anyone here representing this company that we're voting on today? Is there anyone in?
I think so.
Or not? So my question would be, is this, the owners of this entity of Resolution E, I would ask them, you know, where is your LLC set up at? Is it in Biloxi? Is it in Gulfport or is it in, you know, Texas? You know, that, that might be one way as we go through this process and make this a requirement. If you operate a short-term rental in the city of Biloxi, your LLC must reside in the city of Biloxi.
And we could add that as part of the application for short-term rental too.
Right.
To identify that, so.
And that would be the opportunity, Councilman, for a workshop when we propose this ordinance change.
Absolutely.
And that's coming at you pretty soon.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Dave, can you comment on the issues that George has brought up on that particular property?
This piece, this piece of property is Zoned RM30. It's one of two pieces of property right there next to that canal that runs there just south of Division Street. There are only two pieces of property there that are Zoned multifamily that would allow conditional use. Everything else around there is single-family residential. So anybody that, you know, if there's a concern about, you know, this is gonna trigger more short-term rentals in that area, it wouldn't be allowed without them coming to the Planning Commission City Council and getting the zoning change. On this particular piece of property, we have written them up before for code violations. When it went before the city council, it was, looked well maintained. But, you know, it's just one of those things we'd have to experience.
You just said RM20. It's just right in the middle of all the neighborhood on Porter Avenue. Like you said, it's them two little pieces, I don't know why we did that. But I mean, this is a residential neighborhood, which we said we would not do. Then you have a problem, person that has things written up makes it even worse. So no, I just can't recommend to pass that. So I hope y'all stand with me on this one.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call anymore before I call for the question? All in favor?
Mr.?
Go one more.
One thing I would suggest, based on the decision that was recently made by the court about the other short-term rental on St. George, I would suggest that if you are gonna turn it down as a conditional use, you state something specific about why it's being turned down. You know, that it, it either not compatible with the neighborhood or doesn't meet some of the criteria there, but we need to be specific about, about the denial. I don't know if y'all have read that decision yet.
No.
Okay.
And it's easier for me, they don't meet the nine conditional uses.
The, you know, the owner of the property on St. George appealed that to court and the court overturned the council's decision and gave them the approval to move forward with the conditional use. And specifically what they pointed out is that the city council mentioned that they didn't think it was appropriate, but they weren't specific about which one of the nine criteria that it didn't meet. At the end of the, at the end of the discussion, they referred to, okay, well, we, we just think we need to turn it down because we don't think it's right, and referred back to the discussion. But there was no discussion during the meeting about it. So we, we, based on that court's decision, if we're gonna turn down a conditional use, there needs to be some statement in there specifically about why we don't think it's appropriate. And it could be something as simple as it doesn't meet the character of the neighborhood, which is what you were trying to say, Mr. Lawrence.
But it doesn't, that, it doesn't meet the nine conditional uses. And we said that about St. George. It didn't meet any of them. So I know how the court overrules us on that, period.
I have a quick question. Why in the middle of all these single-family residents are these three parcels RM20?
It, it's only two. And, and my guess is the reason is because the one, the one right next to the canal, which is north of this, that y'all have already approved for a conditional use for short-term rental, had two units on the property, two separate units on there. There was a house up front, there was two units in the rear that were in a, in a block building back there, a duplex on the rear. So the council voted, the Planning Commission, the council voted to approve that one as conditional use. This one, I believe, has been used as a duplex. And, and so...
Jerry, it's, it's, we're, we're wrong to say it's in the middle of that neighborhood. It's on the edge of that neighborhood.
It, it's on the edge, the, the property to the north of it is Zoned neighborhood business. All the property west, south, and across the street is Zoned single-family, RS5.
I'm not saying that because I'm trying to push this in one direction or another. I just wanted to make it clear in the minutes that we didn't say something that wasn't true.
It does sit in the middle of the neighborhood, everything around it is, other than the one house. Everything around it is residential. So don't say it's not in the middle of the neighborhood. It sits there. If you, if you know where Dr. Seacool's office was, they used to rent it, then they turned it into duplex. Now a short-term rental. But I mean, you deal with somebody that's carried to the neighborhood and it needs, it's not a need. I mean, you go all nine. And they keep saying the condition, it's got to meet all nine, not one of them, all of them. They don't. And half the ones we've been passing did not meet the nine conditional uses. So we created a problem for ourselves. Go ahead, Paul.
Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, those two parcels, I'm just gonna guess here. But I, I recall they're just south of that drainage culvert.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, I believe there was a galot that lived there, had a, this was years and years ago, when I was in high school.
Okay.
And showing off my crew cut. But there was a galot that lived there who had a tow truck. And I'm wondering if that's why that, that had a... Horace Galot, thank you, Horace Galot. And I, I'm wondering if that's why it, it obtained a commercial, or that's why it was Zoned commercial. Next door, I can remember, was it, you said it was Dr. Seacool's office? I can remember when that was built and, of course, the proximity to the hospital there on Back Bay at the time. But every, everything, if you look at Division Street, north of Division Street, you have Porter Avenue, Forest, all, all of that in there is residential. South of Division, you have the old desk ports on the corner. And you had where Hugo's Restaurant used to be, which is now vacant on the, the east corner. But everything, except for the two properties I mentioned, south of that drainage culvert, until you get to Judge Seacool, I believe they're all residential. They may be rental properties now, but they're all residential.
Single-family, yes, sir.
Right, and then, and then south of that, as you move towards Howard Avenue, it becomes more commercial in there, commercial. So anyway, I, I would think that it's not compatible with the neighborhood. At least this parcel isn't, in my opinion. Thank you, that's, that's my comment.
All right, Mr. Glavin?
Yeah, in addition to what my esteemed colleague just stated, I would bring your attention to one of the requirements is the, the conditional use allows for the protection of property value and the ability of neighboring lands to develop a use of permitted, in the district, permitted zoning in the district. I, I think this is in conflict with that. Certainly if we're providing services for entities and businesses to operate and we're not getting a return on the sales taxes, I think it brings the value of surrounding properties down. And so if you need a reason to be stated, Director, I would include that, in my opinion.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else on E? Okay, I'm gonna call for the question, all in favor? Two, one, two. Newman, Demming, all against? Five, two. Resolution F?
Resolution appointing Jeremy Herring, Ward 7, representative to the Biloxi Trade Committee.
Need a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Who's, who's second it? Okay, Dr. Tisdale. Moved by Mr. Barrett, seconded by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions? No questions, all in favor? Okay, seven, zero, motion carry. Need a motion on the consent agenda?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, on A, Mike, what is a disc brake dolly and a one-drum adapter? What are we doing there? What is that?
Hey.
That's what the mechanics use to change the disc brakes for the fire trucks. So it's what they use to take off the hub for the fire trucks, it's a jack.
Just wondering, you know, trying to figure out what that was.
That's all right now, if there's anything else, I'll come back.
That's it?
Yeah. I'm looking at them. I'm...
Okay. Ms. Newman?
Nothing.
Mr. Demming? Dr. Tisdale?
Nothing.
Mr. Glavin?
I don't have any comment.
Mr. Barrett?
I have nothing.
George again, you sure?
Come on, give me a...
The only one I was gonna ask you again about K, with that charging. Then we, we did that last week, what is this, dealing with, with the charging station?
Oh, last week, we approved the grant, but this just attaches what was actually submitted. It's just putting the grant application, spreading that on the minutes. Last week was approving the right to submit, and now we submitted it that afternoon. So we're just putting it on the record.
And we have another one there, Mike or Peter, one of y'all, the heavy sand. And now it's washing in the Gulf right now, so we had, how much, gonna cost those to replace that? It just raining water and the flood, that heavy sand, back in the Gulf.
There's a lot more there to wash away than there was before.
Oh, yeah, well, that's a million-dollar worth of sand. Yeah, that's, well, I like that statement, Mike, wow. So we, every year we gotta do this, put up a million-dollar worth of sand? All right. And the other one, you said you wasn't ready for this from last week, Mike, N?
How about November?
No, keep N.
What, what we're doing is extending the term of the agreement for another year to give us a time to work out the details.
I thought we did that last week. Rachel?
What'd you? Last week we approved the management agreement. This week we're doing the extension of the term of the lease to give us a year to work out the details.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, you good?
That's it?
All right. Call for a question, all in favor? Okay, seven, zero, anyone against? Mr. Lawrence? Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming? Tisdale?
None.
Glavin? Barrett? None. Consent agenda passes. Move on to code enforcement, number six, Mr. Creel.
Item, item A on the, the agenda, James V. Brosch Jr. Estate, 2019 Southern Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item B, Willie Pearl Brunfield Estate, 1673 Vine Street. That case has been resolved. Imara Akinyala Esters and Gail Tyler, 1601 Lewis Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item D, Christine Hardison Estate, 166 Jasmine Street. That case has been resolved. Item E, Joseph Anthony Kamat II Life Estate, 841 V Street. This property is still in violation. This house on V Street, I can tell you, getting the pictures pulled up, understand there was some, allegedly some drug activity going on. The house caught on fire. And it, it burned the inside of the house out. And essentially what's there is the framework around the shell.
Well, I, I recall this was before, it's a number of months ago. Has there been a fire, this was a fire at that location?
No, sir, this has just recently happened on this particular house.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone, is there anyone here regarding V Street? Is there anyone here regarding V Street? Consider that matter closed.
Item F, Land Equity LLC, 636 Murray Street. That case has been resolved. Item G, Mox 6 Holding LLC, 864 Lackland Drive. That case has been resolved. Item H, Jasmine Win, 191 Holly Street. This property is still in violation.
Oh, okay, I see which one.
Let me, let me just tell you a little bit about this house. To look at the pictures, doesn't do it justice. It's eat up with termite damage on the inside. I had my inspectors go down and meet with the owner of the property and go through it. And this house would, number one, any attempt to repair it would be a substantial improvement, which means that it would have to be elevated. And I've talked to an, their project engineer about it. And he did not believe that it would hold up if they tried to elevate this house a couple of feet. So it's, it's got termite damage from top to bottom on the inside.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the Holly Street House? Anyone here to speak on behalf of Holly Street? Consider that matter closed.
Item I, People's Bank of Biloxi, 420 Cabot Street. That's one that we're gonna have to start over on that property. People's Bank sold that piece of property. So we're gonna go back and address the new owner. So we'll consider that resolved here. Item J, Praise Temple Full Gospel Baptist Church of Biloxi, 229 Coon Street. That case has been resolved.
We should have it next week. We'll definitely have it for our next council meeting.
Anything else you got?
We are working with MEMA on 1.2 million in reimbursements, that's reconciliation change orders. So that is money the cities have already paid out, and we're seeking the reimbursement on that, those funds. So we should probably, hopefully have that also at our next council meeting.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions, Dan? All in favor of the routine? Okay, seven-zero. Motion carry.
All moved.
And before we adjourn, I just wanna say we're gonna take five minutes after we adjourn this meeting, before we continue on to the special meeting to give our secretary a chance to readjust all the stuff. So I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Dr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Lawrence. Any questions? All in favor? Okay, seven-zero. Five minutes. All right, special, special, special meeting called by the city council, June 20th, 23. This is after the city council meeting. I need a motion to accept the agenda?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, and then second by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions? All in favor? Okay, seven-zero. Motion carry. Present, presentation agenda, mayor's report. Mr. Peter?
No report.
All right, council report?
No report.
No report? No report? Deming? No report? No report. Okay, public comments, public agenda, citizen comments, total of 45 minutes, three minutes per person. Anyone on my left would like to come up and speak? Yes, sir, Mr. Bailey.
Afternoon, again, during our break, I had an opportunity to speak with, with Peter about some of the changes that, that, you know, I had proposed and some I'd heard from other people as far as the ordinance itself, and looks like we are in somewhat of agreement on, on some of these things that might work out and might clean up some of the language. Naturally, I'd like to see it all prepared and, and then written up again, so we can review those revisions and make sure it does, it does work. to make sure it does, it does work. As you know, these ordinances, one, you talk about one part here and it affects another part over in this section. So, uh, I think we need to see all that if we can, uh, you know, sort of look at these things and hopefully these things will, will, will be cleaned up. So, if, uh, if things are cleaned up, um, we may have something that, uh, we hopefully can all work with. So, uh, hopefully the revisions will be, will be good and, uh, will work. So, I'd like that opportunity to look those over if we get a chance to, if, if provided y'all don't vote on it today and, uh, and, and move forward. So, hopefully y'all consider that, so. But, uh, anyway, the same concerns I mentioned to y'all before, I won't, won't bore y'all with them again, are, are still out there and, um, maybe some of these revisions will, will address all that. Hopefully they will. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bailey. Anyone else on my left? Mr. Swetman?
Uh, Chavis Swetman, uh, I'm chairman of Cruising the Coast, uh, Bill, uh, Mr. Woody has come up with some ideas and thoughts that I think are very beneficial. I think you, we get those implemented, uh, we want to encourage activity, we want to encourage business development. Look down the, the View Marche Mall and I can, I can remember when it was two lanes of traffic and then it had a canopy and then it was a walking mall and then it went back to one lane of traffic. Then it went to two lanes of traffic. Uh, but I think what we have there now is something that the entire business community can work with. You know, we're getting a lot of restaurants coming in. We're getting those apartments coming into the area and this would be a way to showcase Biloxi, uh, going forward and, uh, I think we need to look at these things and be as positive as we can, uh, without creating harm or concern within the community. Uh, whatever Woody and your council can get together that's reasonable, you know, I think we need to go forward with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Swetman. Anyone else on my left?
Good afternoon, y'all. Keith Williams, chairman of Gulf Coast Carnival Association and, uh, I've tried to be as many of these meetings as I can. Woody has kept me updated on a lot, all the revisions and changes. Um, as I told y'all before, I have the utmost, uh, respect for, uh, this council and what y'all are going to vote on and what y'all are gonna have that's gonna be betterment, for the betterment of the city of Biloxi. Understand what y'all are trying to do. I just want to make sure that we're not putting too much of the burden on, uh, the organizations, uh, like Gulf Coast Carnival, who is a nonprofit. We put back as much, uh, money into it as we can, but I fully understand the money the city of Biloxi spends, uh, with all the support, with the fire, police and everything else. Uh, but when you look at the number of the citizens, uh, that participate in the events of Gulf Coast Carnival and events like ours, not just Gulf Coast Carnival, all the parades that happen in the city of Biloxi, I understand that we've got to make sure we have it as buttoned up as we possibly can. Uh, Woody tells me that they are talking, uh, out in the hall just a little while ago about some of the revisions. So, um, I will trust Woody in making sure that he is, um, communicating what needs to be communicated and I know the council is gonna do what's right. Um, I hope we get another chance to look at these revisions and that the final vote is not taken today, uh, but we do get to discuss it some more and take a look at it. So, the Gulf Coast Carnival Association for, uh, many, many, many years, uh, had a great partnership with the city of Biloxi and I know will continue to do so. So, thank y'all for all your efforts in making sure that events like ours and others, uh, are gonna be what it should be for the city and the citizens of the city of Biloxi and the Gulf Coast. Thank y'all.
Thank you so much. Okay, anyone else? Anyone else on the left? Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Ronnie Toler. Uh, I'm with Scraping the Coast. Uh, we moved our event to Biloxi twenty years ago at the Coast Coliseum. Uh, I came to the meetings five years ago and told this council that if the ordinances that were proposed five years ago were put into play, that we would have never moved our event. Uh, I'm just hoping that these new considerations for an ordinance is not just a knee jerk reaction for an event or for a happening, we'll call it, that had everybody up in arms. Uh, my group, everyone else here that's come to every meeting to, to support the city in making this ordinance viable for everyone involved. Uh, I wish that we could take a little more time and get definite answers from the council and on these ordinance and having more questions answered than leaving the building with more questions. Uh, so I appreciate the consideration that the council's given to all the events and I look forward to working with y'all on more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone, I miss anyone in the room? Okay, with that being said, citizen comments are now closed. We're gonna move into the policy agenda, uh, to discuss the matters pertaining to the proposed ordinance, parades, other conditions pertaining to municipal facilities, mobile food vending, recreational vehicle, chain in the storage or park, parking of heavy trucks, trailers, major recreation vehicles, mobile homes, and also pertaining to special events. Okay, Ms. Lawrence?
Yes, uh, Peter, I know you've been meeting with them. Could you kind of update from where we were? We started off with a bad, and every time we have a meeting, you've been changing, it's getting better and better for them. You know, 'cause we don't want to affect anybody that does everything right. So, we, you need to give us a heads up of where we at now?
Yeah, and I would say that, uh, nothing's been bad or better or good. It's just that we have taken some comments they've made about, uh, some considerations they have that, that we didn't address and we've incorporated all those. I guess what's on the agenda now is probably the third draft from when we started as far as, uh, result of different meetings with the various groups that do, do apply year in and year out and the groups that we do have a history with. Uh, the latest concerns that, that were, uh, in my opinion are valid and that we've worked with. Uh, for example, at the, at the Coliseum during Cruising the Coast, there is a, like a swap meet and there's two hundred and eighty, uh, vendors there at the swap meet. So, how do we deal with the situation of, you know, we want these vendors to, we want to make sure they're paying taxes. We want to make sure they're, uh, there's a record of who they are and not just showing up. So, what we've had, what we had before is, in one of the previous changes we made, that if you're renting on a city facility where you already have a special, uh, rental agreement with the city, like for example, somebody rents the town green, we already have a separate rental agreement with them already and we're already requiring a lot of this stuff already, that we exempted that out of the special event permitting because the city is, already has that under control. So, the next thing we're proposing is, you know, and if, if your business is to already have large events like Shucker Stadium or the Coliseum, uh, that's not what we're trying to regulate. We're trying to regulate things that are in excess of a normal business relationship. But at the Coliseum, we're proposing to add an exemption for any events that are taking place on the grounds of the Coliseum. But as far as vendors are concerned, either the vendors still have to be permitted or they are allowed to, uh, secure appropriate permissions through the main sponsor, which is what Cruising the Coast does right now. Although there's two hundred and eighty event, two hundred and eighty vendors at the Coliseum, they all have permissions and, and Woody keeps, uh, has permission slips and tax forms from all of them that he controls all the vendors and is, is sort of, uh, keeping track of their compliance. So, we have a responsible sponsor who would be applying and he would, he would be the person in charge of all those vendors. Uh, at First Friday, I think Main Street has all the vendors that are there under the umbrella of First Friday. So, adding that requirement in there, putting the vendors under, under a, uh, that the sponsor, you gotta have a controlling sponsor to control all these vendors. That'll take the burden off of us as far as regulating every vendor and it'll also make sure that we know these vendors, uh, are paying their sales tax and things like that. So, that was, that was one kind of very important change for them. And, and any of the changes that he's talking about, he's just looking at the current business model of Cruising the Coast and he's pointing out things that, that may affect how they're normally doing things. And like, you know, y'all discussed in the previous meeting, we want to take a business model that's working well and working good and we don't want to pass something that's gonna, that's gonna, you know, unduly burden what they're already doing. Um, another thing we talked about that was, um...
Peter?
Yes?
Excuse me, before you go on?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I, I, I understand what you're saying about Cruising the Coast, but let's say the Gulf Coast Carnival Association or Scraping the Coast, because we're, we're not familiar with their models. I, I, I don't want to make an assumption that Scraping the Coast, uh, if they have an event at the, at the Coliseum and maybe they have sixty vendors, I don't know if, if they are as involved with their, or have a list of those. Sounds like Woody and, uh, Cruising the Coast, they know who the vendors are. They know probably where the vendors are gonna be. They know how to contact the vendors. They have all the pertinent information. But, uh, but then, and, and as you were speaking, I'm thinking about Gulf Coast Carnival Association. Man, they're, they're, they're spread out everywhere. I don't know if they collect any information on their vendors now. So, I, so I don't know, I, I understand what, a better feel for what Cruising the Coast does. Do these other organizations, do they pretty much do the same?
I'm not saying they're responsible for every vendor that's out there. They're, but they're responsible for a vendor that's connected with their event. Let's say if Mardi Gras Parade is going on and, uh, Paul's Chicken Truck just shows up, it's not connected with anybody, but it just shows up and sets up at the courthouse parking lot. It doesn't have any permissions. It's just a renegade. Now, that, that truck should either have its own separate permit through the city or they should have a permission or sponsorship through Gulf Coast Carnival. So, we're not just letting a vendor show up saying he's with an event.
Right. So, now I'm pulling the thread a little bit because some of these events occur on the weekends. Uh, I don't know who would in, in the city would enforce or monitor these things, but if they're for events that serve on the weekend, then schedules have to be adjusted. I would assume, I don't know if the state sends anybody down to check from time to time. But, um, if Kenny's Chicken Shack rolls in and sets up in, on a corner by the courthouse...
They'll have feather banners on them as well, Paul.
Oh, a good turn of phrase, Kenny. And, uh, sets up in the parking lot there across from the courthouse, then somebody at some point, I would assume maybe multiple times, if you have multiple, somebody's going out saying, Kenny, I need to see your permit. But I don't know if we do that now, but it, it's, it's monitoring and enforcement and then who do I have to call if Kenny says, I'm not moving? 'Cause we all know how obstinate Kenny can be at times. So, um, that being the case, I mean, the, these are the ripples. Once you start throwing the pebbles in the puddle, these are all the ripples that are created. And I would assume that's gonna cause, uh, a need for greater manpower, certainly on those days or maybe that, those times of the years for events that run an entire week. But...
There would be. I mean, but that's, that's the second phase.
All right. You ready to explain phase two then?
No, no, I mean, the first phase is getting the rules in place. Then we, how you enforce them is the second.
Thank you.
Yeah, another, another, uh, concern was Cruising the Coast advertises, you know, a year out and would they prohibit be, or Mardi Gras or any major event, would they be prohibited from, uh, advertising because it said until the permit was obtained? And so, we just modified that to say, uh, advertising was, wouldn't start unless and until the permit has been applied for, uh, which is a year out and for a large event, they can apply as early as a year out. So, uh, you know, obviously we want them to, to advertise and promote the coast, so...
Question about that. I'm sorry, I have a lot of questions.
Sure.
So, let's say, uh, Mr. Bailey, uh, applies three hundred and sixty days prior to the event and, um, he gathers everything 'cause he's very efficient in how he manages that event and he gets everything to the event, special event coordinator. At some point, that coordinator, I think in here it specifies within so many days, they've gotta forward, uh, after doing due diligence, basically, they forward that to the special event committee and they look over it in a particular timeframe and, and then it, uh, I guess they're, they're approved. Somebody says, okay, you're good to go and then Mr. Bailey's notified. So, if, if, if he applies a year out, basically, he, it's gonna take a month before he, at least a month, before he hears something and at that point, then he's able to advertise.
It, you just apply for it. He can advertise as soon as he applies for it. Now, we, you know, a month or two later, if it, if it was denied and, uh, or a different event, it's denied, then after it's denied, you can't advertise. But it would be...
So, he could advertise for that month and then he's gotta say, never mind, or ups? More or less?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, uh, Peter, what kind of rules you have for denying it?
What's that?
Why would we have any set of rules to deny things that people have been doing it for the last twenty, thirty years?
I was just responding to his hypothetical.
I was just asking you, so that would, we have a clause that states that? That they know already? The denial? To deny it?
I mean, I think the grounds for denial would be if, um, if an event or something is submitted that has no plan, uh, there's no real, uh, security plan or, or insurance or any kind of a plan, uh, the committee could deny that. If they deny it, or if they deny any portion of it, that person, that applicant can appeal to the city council for a final determination.
Well, I mean, the problem we have with the bad event we have is there's nobody to contact and nobody to deny. So, what do you do about that?
Well, if they don't apply, then they really can't advertise and, and, and if they don't have everything in order within four months before and they continue to advertise, then, uh, you know, if, if it looks like it's gonna be a problem on the coast, we would, we'd move to seek conjunctive action before the event takes place.
Look, yeah, let, let me ask a, a few questions on that point. You know, uh, ain't no doubt tourism, we got fifteen million visitors that come to the coast and, uh, this is some of the, uh, big event promoters and, and they work tirelessly every year for these events that are established and do more good than, than any harm. But on the, on the condition that you just said, that nobody has applied, uh, properly, we know there's going to be, uh, crowds that are difficult to control, could we then implement, uh, the, the teeth of the matter, which is curfews, which is the traffic vending plans, which is, uh, you know, whatever bans that we need to put in effect to protect the public welfare? Would we then move to that level?
Absolutely.
Okay. I think that satisfies one of the, uh, I guess, conditions that we've been looking for is that we don't want a repeat of what happened this past, uh, in April again. So, if we have that, that ability to recognize that and take action in advance, I, I think that's one of the main things that we've been looking for.
And if we know of locations where things are gonna occur, that it's better, I think the chief would speak to this, it's better to be on the front end, uh, if we have, uh, you know, a court order or otherwise to stop the event before it starts.
Look, one other point, and I submitted, uh, uh, some material that other tourist destinations distribute, uh, in the hotels, is, uh, a list of conditions or ordinances or expected behavior or, uh, certain things could be put in, uh... is uh a list of conditions or ordinances or expected behavior or uh certain things could be put in, in effect. I know our Hotel Lodging Association stands ready uh to distribute that information for all events that uh, that are uh coming to, to the Gulf Coast. But I think that's an information piece that, that lets everyone that's attending, whether it's Mardi Gras, whether it's Cruising the Coast or any event, know that there's some expected behavior, that, that there could be consequences.
Peter, I have another question. You mentioned injunctive relief. So we, we know how to notify Woody if we need injunctive relief from Woody or Chevis or Mr. Tolbert or Mr. Williams. But like these, like Spring Break, we don't necessarily know who we're dealing with. So, so who we, who do you seek injunctive relief from? I don't know, maybe, chief, I'm sorry, I directed that, Peter, to you.
That's all right. Typically, there's gonna be a property location involved and there's a property owner.
Tell me about that, I got it.
That owns that property, so.
Okay.
So that, we would have an intel unit that would immediately start researching, trying to determine if it was a social media posting. They would immediately try to determine who, who put out that, that social media post. And eventually, we're gonna fin, figure that out, that's who, directly who we're gonna go to.
Okay.
And explain it to them, you're, you're, you're trying to, to advertise for something that you're not prepared to advertise for. You haven't taken the proper channels, you haven't done the proper things. Let me back up just a second also. I think we're chipping away at something that's a little bit ridiculous. And that is, we keep looking at Cruising the Coast and, and these events that have been here for so long. So I, I can't, I, I can't imagine that, that we're getting caught up on whether they can start advertising, when they need to start advertising. If there's been no significant change in Cruising the Coast, why would we, why would that be denied by anybody?
Right.
Why would the committee ever deny it? Now, if there's been some substantial change where Woody's decided he's gonna have fifty thousand cars this year, yes. We would have to sit down and talk about that. Because the infrastructure nor the, the ability of police or fire or public works could handle fifty thousand cars, right? Registered, registered cars. So I, I think we're focusing too much on, on something that, that, that nobody is even gonna ever think of not allowing Cruising the Coast or Mardi Gras. I mean, if you think about it, and I don't want to sound this way, but that's a little bit ridiculous to think that we would try to deny something like that that has been repeatedly proven itself over and over and over. But we've also said that, that the only event that gives us problems is, is uh this time, let's just refer to Black, Black Spring Break. But that's not true. All events come with problems. Part of this will solve some of those problems and not really cause anybody, any of the, the promoters real issues. I think we're just getting too way too caught up on the fact that we, somebody's gonna try to do something sneaky and stop Woody from having his event or stop Ron from having his event. And that's, that is not at all what this is, what this is geared to do.
Right. And, and you mentioned, I heard, property in here somewhere. And I know there, there are some issues in, in what's proposed that directly affect property owners. I don't know if you're ready to get into that yet, Peter. Maybe we save that for a different time, but uh I just, I keep thinking of the Schuler Lot on the corner of Pine Grove and Highway ninety. And there's a lot of activity there and that really kind of is part of the focal, focal point in terms of where Ground Zero is. And that's, that's the biggest concern of mine and the homeowners in that area. And, and I'm thinking for events like Spring Break or Cruising the Coast for that matter. I'm, I, I assume they, they work with property owners if they're gonna have a site or a venue or need parking. So I mean, they're gonna be affected to some extent as well. But who, who, I guess whoever's filling out whatever paperwork is required has to identify those properties. And if I read this correctly, they've got to have some sort of letter or notarized statement or something from the property owner saying, yeah, we're, we're good with this. Right?
Right, and the property owner, depending on the number of participants on that piece of property, may have other permitting to ask for. Just, you know, if you have an empty lot, but you want to have five hundred people show up and have a party on that lot, that's gonna fall under, I mean, maybe a tier three, but that's still gonna be a, a permit.
Right.
Because that's not the normal use for that vacant lot.
Right.
There's several things in there, let's, let's, let's look back at the Schuler Lot like you're talking about. Part of the problem with the Schuler Lot is that, that when there's a, an event there, they're all the way down on ninety. I mean, they're over the sidewalk, their vendors are set up right there, people actually stopping their cars, getting out of their cars and buying stuff from vendors right in the highway. Part of this will move those folks back, am I correct?
Right.
Part of the parade, that's in the parade ordinance, will actually move those fat folks back, is it sixty feet? Thirty yards, it'll move them back thirty yards off the roadway, that will prevent some of that. They'll also have to put their back to the roadway. So you'll have to actually go up and go into the event like you should in order to purchase something.
Do we have, I mean, that's, again, that's a monitoring and enforcement thing.
It is.
And I'm thinking that's, that's intensive in terms of manpower and having folks monitor or whatever.
Well, you have to take it all, you know, the whole big picture.
Yes, sir.
You know, because before it ever gets to that point, if, if they're following the law and, and we're gonna see to it that they follow the law before they're gonna have a big event, if they're following the law, uh then we will have already spoken with them, we've already made it very clear to the promoter. And if you do, here's, here's what's gonna happen.
Right.
We have to have teeth somewhere. And I, I know that uh a part of that gives me a lot of authority, uh you know. And I, I know you had mentioned one time that, that maybe that authority would be okay with me, but it might not be with the chief, you know, five years from now.
I don't have any reservations yet, chief.
All right, good, good, I appreciate that. But there's gotta, there's have, there has to be a point, there has to be somewhere, there has to be somebody that once, if everything's approved and this, this event's rolling along and it's going good and then suddenly it gets out of hand, there has to be a mechanism for somebody to step up and say, okay, we're shutting this down. That's all this does, that's what this does, that's what that portion of it does. It allows me uh that leadway to go in and say, and hey, if I do it, I'm gonna be able to articulate to you why I do it. I'm gonna be able to explain to you, we did this because it was a public safety issue.
Does a hundred and fifty feet y'all moving them back on the lots, how's that gonna work with that property? Like the vendors, you said it had to be a hundred and fifty feet back. I mean, if, that's look like, that's not a good thing like normal. But people walking through the property, a lot of people have to be on that property to buy something from those vendors.
Yeah, well, that, I, I can't think of any other safe way to do it than other than just to set them, let them walk right down the sidewalk and stop and buy. That's a problem now, it spills into the roadway. And we lost, completely lost Highway ninety simply because of that this past, this past uh Spring Break. So moving them back, making them face away from the roadway, uh it, it, it's not gonna affect them. If somebody's coming to that event, they're gonna walk up there and get whatever they want. It's not going to affect the event, it's not gonna affect the vendors. But it is gonna, it is gonna affect the roadway and the traffic in the roadway and pedestrians getting out on the roadway.
But if, if they did apply, let's assume they do apply and they present a plan that has vendors packed in every square inch. I mean, the committee, and, and this is designed to say, rather than just deny it, the committee can say, we'll approve this with, with half the vendors or with a reasonable number of vendors. I mean, it can be, it can be uh curtailed or modified instead of just outright denying. But that's something the committee would look at and look at, how many people are expected to be here? I mean, I think they would take history into account as well. But I mean, uh that's one way to deal with the traffic in there is you just, you would have to limit the number of vendors on a piece of property.
And not only do you have vendors, because the majority of, of, of some of the promoters, I mean, they're in the business, they want to make as much money as they can. He's right, they're gonna pack the vendors on there. But the reality of it is, there's more to it than vendors. There should be parking, there should be a bunch, restroom facilities, there should be a bunch of things on that property other than just vendors. And this, this basically lays that out for them. It comes to the committee, but before it ever gets there, the events coordinator's gonna tell them, you, percentage wise, this is how big your property is. You can't have this many vendors, you don't have room for parking, you don't have room for anything else. And then if it comes to the committee, then the committee's either gonna deny it. If it, if it's, if it's not in proportion of, the, the number of things they're trying to have on that property aren't in proportion with the size of the property. And that makes perfect sense.
I, I have a question. So I know we talked about this past year on Spring Break on the forty-two gun violations, up to twelve assaults on police officers. It's all been well documented, the uh five people shot, uh we had a murder. We had an adjacent city that also experienced some issues. Last year's Spring Break, was it all good and, and hunky-dory or were there gun violations then? Were there assaults? Can you compare maybe two years' worth of information?
I, I, yeah, I don't, I can't sit here and compare that for you now, but I can tell you this, and I'm accurate on this, and I think I can pull up the stats to show it. It's progressively gotten worse each year.
So.
We're just talking about that event.
What triggers enough is enough, and, and I'm, look, Spring Break may come back this year and may be all good and clear, I hope it does. That's what, of what we all want. But what happens to an event? And I'm not gonna pick on Spring Break anymore, but just say a event that demonstrates a history of those. I mean, the city should have an obligation if they know that event is repeating and we haven't been able to control it and there's gonna be this type of activity. When do we say enough's enough and we do put the plan i- in effect that's good for the public welfare? When do we do that, chief?
Well, I mean, I think that uh, you know, I think once you, you've seen that a particular event or a particular promoter of an event can't handle the event or is allowing things to get out of hand, I think to me enough is enough there. If not, it does lead to five people being shot, it does lead to, to a lot of people being injured and, and officers assaulted. Which is another part of, of this, we do the background on, on the promoter. If we have a promoter that comes to Biloxi and wants to put on a big event and we, we do the background and figure out that, that he had an event uh in Vegas or he had an event in Arizona or wherever he had his event and it was a horrible event and, and we find out that there was a whole lot of problems and they didn't follow the, follow the rules of, of whatever the event was there, then that, to me, that's a reason to deny them right there.
I agree.
We want good, solid events here, family events, we want things that we can depend on and not have to worry about. Now, there's always gonna be some problems and we know that. We want, we want events that we, we can, we can allow our citizens to come be a part of. If there's kids out there, we feel safe, that's what we want. I think we all are gonna agree on that.
I have a quick, I have a, I have a quick question, you know, and, and this is going back to events like the Spring Break. Have you thought about um mounting units, horses uh to help navigate those crowds? Because you know, once the streets are locked up, there's not much you can do, even when you're talking about getting the ambulants in, ambulants out, getting um uh police officers from point A to point B, they can't get there. Have you ever, have you thought about that in some fashion or form?
Discussed it and thought about it, and the reality of it is, to me, mounted, mounted units are great. Uh and they're, they're, they're pleasing to see, they do a lot of good. But if, if we get to the point, if we, if we've allowed things to get to the point uh that we have to bring in a mounted unit because we can't get somewhere, we've lost it anyway, we really have. Uh we don't need to allow Highway ninety to, to become road blocked, we don't need that, we need to stop it ahead of time. And besides that, got to have officers to put on top of those horses.
The question we all sitting here talking about the, the bad event we had. The problem, what we keep talking about, it happened five thirty on a Sunday evening, there was no event, there was nothing. There was just ten thousand people walking them down the street.
Right.
And that's right, so like you said, all these controls, that has nothing to do with what happened. And we can't address that unless you get them off the Highway ninety.
What, what we have are, are in, in this new ordinance is we have times. So we've, the first, the first basic thing you have to do is establish a criteria for people so they know. If there's a promoter and he knows that it's Sunday afternoon, you know, it's your responsibility to make sure this thing is shut down. That's, that's the first step, is making sure that they understand that there, there are rules in place that they have to adhere to.
Yeah, but there's no promoter for those things, that's the problem we've had for the last few years.
Right.
There is nobody to talk to.
That's right.
And nobody to call.
What I would expect to happen now, once these rules and regulations are in place, I would expect uh someone with integrity, someone that knows that they're gonna run a decent business, I would expect somebody to step up and say, I, you know, I'm gonna give it a shot. And then they'd have to follow this set of rules. I mean, we gotta start somewhere.
Is there any way we can shut Highway ninety down on like, say, Sat, Sunday or Saturday? Like get the mall, mall right there between them all, one way or the other?
You, you know what we have, councilman, you know, you know, you got Pass Road would be your only, your only way of travel.
If they don't want to go, if they're going there for the Coliseum and the beach and the mall, if they can't get there, then they're not gonna go anywhere. So when you shut that highway down.
Yeah, you're talking about shutting it down.
Highway down, correct.
Yeah. Now, that, have to give that some thought.
No, so you know, and that's why they offer them, you get rid of them. And another thing we wanna do, keep grandfather in, all the people that have been doing anything right for the last twenty, thirty, forty years. Have we looked at that, Peter? Grandfather in them in?
No.
You know, why not? But none of them done anything wrong. It's all, we all getting wrapped up in a, a one bed event and we still are not addressing the problem we had from that one bed event.
Chief, why is this plan that we're putting into effect better than Galveston Beach or Panama City Beach or Daytona Beach? Where they've put the ordinances in effect for alcohol bans, for curfews, uh for ticket in tow? Why is this a better plan?
Well, this, I, I don't know that it's a better plan, but this is a starting point for us. Uh and you may have, you may have heard differently, but everything is not hunky-dory and it's not all working. When you put a ban in for a particular month and say, you know, we're not gonna allow any alcohol this month, well, guess what? The following month, they do it, and that's what's happening there now. So they're, it's, they've not, they're about like us. They're feeling their way through and, and, and trying to make things work and figuring out what's working and what's not working. But the reality of it is, you gotta start somewhere. And, and, and as far as I'm concerned, these ordinances are something that's been needed for a long, long time. They need to be in place. Then we can move from there. You know, if we think we're gonna, we think we're gonna ban alcohol on the beach, which we really don't have the authority to do that. That's gonna be the Sand Beach Authority and I, 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 I would be very surprised if that were to take place. I'd be very surprised.
Well, in all due respect, you say, you say these ordinances are needed. I, I mean, I commend all these uh organizations that are here at the table today. They have worked around the clock to ensure they're organized and they have a safe and they have an experience like none other that we walk away with a good taste in our mouth. There's really one event, I know there's a few other minor events that we've had a bad taste in our mouth. And that's why, you know, what we're putting into effect seems like it does put, they're willing to shoulder the burden for the broader good and I commend y'all for that. But I just want to make sure we keep our eye on the ball that if there's something else that we need to put in effect, we gotta pull the trigger on it.
Dr. Tizell?
Yeah, I just pay special attention to section twelve, four, thirty, spontaneous, unpermitted events, basically. Um the, the bulk of that, of, well, that's entirely devoted to events that aren't responsible and accountable. They just show up. And I would think everything that's listed under that, and it's rather extensive, the number of uh individual items. But it gives you a, a, a very good idea of what, what is expected. And I would assume would give you with the data that's collected, a good idea of whether or not that event would even be permitted in the city the following year. Because all those indicators, basically, you're just collecting data. That gives you a lot, a lot of background.
It absolutely does. And, and that would be one of those, one of those reasons to, if someone did come forward and, and applied for a permit the year before, they had just went ahead and had their event, never even applied for anything, it just did the pop-up event, kinda like what we have now.
Right.
They had actually done, I, I think that we'd had no problems. I don't think this council have any problems upholding uh if we were denied that. You know, no, you know, this is what you did last year, we're not, you know. I think, I don't think anybody have any problems denying that.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Bayard?
Peter, hypothetically, let's say that we pass all of these organizations. And I think it says a lot that um this is our fourth or fifth meeting about this. And every time Cruising Coast has showed up, Scraping the Coast has showed up, the Mardi Gras organizations have showed up. But to date, no one from Spring Break has showed up here. I think that, that says a lot. But hypothetically, we all come to agreement, we pass these resolutions. At what point do we pass the resolutions, the different layers of stuff as Kenny was referring to? To also, you know, to address some of the specific issues? Because, you know, I, I, I know that, that the event ordinances are necessary, but you know, we can't. but, you know, we can't skirt around the issue that the reason that we're having these discussions is not because of any of these other groups. We're having these discussions because of the things that have happened at spring break this past year and the years in the past. At what point do we pass those other things to put layers on this to further protect the city? And then, once we pass those, the implementation of, what if these guys don't apply for permits? And then boom, we have 40,000 or 50,000 people show up in our city, and there's food trucks everywhere? And what do we do then?
So, a lot of those things are already in place. They've been there. We've had them for a long time. We've had ticket-in tow for years. We've done the traffic plan probably a half a dozen different ways over the years. Sometimes it works better than others. I can't think of anything, any ordinance that's not in place other than alcohol bans. That's the only thing that I can think of right now that's not...
What about a curfew?
We have curfews in place. We can change some of those if we need to.
What about, and what about loitering in parking lots that you're not patronizing that business? Is that something that we can, that we can, is that, Peter, is that something that we could pass?
Yeah, I mean, well, we, I mean, the reality of what would happen, since we have now, now we have a time limit of when somebody should apply, if they want to do something correctly. And so for a large event, you know, you need to be applying at least 120 days out, four months before this thing that's advertised. So any event that's being advertised over and over, and we get to day 119, and there's no permit, I mean, then that is a, that's an unpermitted event getting ready to happen in four months. And then, I think at that point, we can talk about a lot of different things.
So...
Curfews.
So, as far, okay. So, as far as the advertising thing and enforcing that, how do you enforce something that's advertised on social media, basically on a shadow page, that you have no clue who is in charge of that page?
I'm just saying, if something is being advertised to come to Biloxi on this date, and we don't have any record of this, of an application for this event, then that is a, that's an unpermitted event and a spontaneous event.
I understand that. But how do you enforce, if they're advertising on a Facebook page? Because that's how, that's, that spring break, that's how they advertise. And it's basically, you don't know who's advertised. They have 25 administrators on a page.
There were addresses, though, put out. You know, Wool Market.
I understand that. But I'm talking about the actual people who's doing the advertising. How do we, how do we make that stop if they haven't applied for the proper permits? Or they haven't? So if 119 days hits, and they're sitting here steadily advertising on Facebook, or, you know, there's a Facebook page that's promoting, "Come to Biloxi on this particular date", what, how do we circumvent that? How do we stop that?
Well, that's the police, and I think that's when the chief, we'd have a plan. And I mean, it may be venting. It may be just continuous venting, if need be. There's a lot of different things.
If we can identify who they are, there's sanctions that we can take against them. I mean, they're violating the law. They know what this ordinance says. They know they have to do this ahead of time. We can take sanctions against them. As far as loitering, currently, we've done this for years. Every time there's an event now, every lot that's not filled up, or any business that's had problems in the past, we're getting a trespass letter from them. We've been doing that for years.
Okay.
Yeah, all that stuff we've done, we're currently...
And I understand the manpower issue. Once 30,000 or 40,000 people are in town, it's sort of hard to, you know, to enforce certain things. I understand that.
That far, yes.
But how do we, prior to any of this happen, happening, how do we enforce some of these things?
So, currently, we'll see a Facebook post maybe about an event that's going to take place at a hotel. So we go directly to the hotel and ask the hotel, "Do you know anything about this event?" This is regular. This happens all the time. And the hotel's going to tell us, "Well, yeah, we rented that room to so-and-so, so-and-so. We rented a suite to this person." Or, "We don't know anything about it." So a lot of times, we get help from the business community. They'll shut it down themselves. I mean, that's the last thing they want. Nobody's telling them that they're doing this. But probably 70% of the stuff that we see gives a physical location, and that physical location belongs to somebody else. You can start with them. Sometimes they have some knowledge of it. "Well, yeah, I didn't realize that's what they're doing, but thanks for telling me." Or, "No, I have no knowledge of that at all." The first I'm hearing about it. That's all it is.
Okay, Dr. Tisdale, you have one more?
Yeah, I mean, we keep thinking and talking about, I think, in our frame of mind is, you know, tens of thousands of people. This also helps you with a group of 1,000 who come here for a reunion that you don't know anything about.
It does.
Maybe they get wild and crazy, or groups of 500 people. And I don't know how many of those events you had, but I remember you ticked them off at one of our council meetings or workshops. It's just like countless. It's not just 10 or 20. This goes on pretty much constantly then.
Constant, yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah. What about, go ahead, Robert.
There you go.
I'm sorry.
And I'm just now getting the floor, so I'm going to start from the beginning. And we talked about the events and all of the great events that we have here in Biloxi, the ones that are done the right way, the ones that are responsible, the Cruisin' the Coast, the Scrapin' the Coast, the Mardi Gras parades and all of that stuff. We want those, but we also want more events, right? So anytime government does something, it's just like physics. There's an equal and opposite reaction, right? And so, what do you foresee the negatives of passing these ordinances are? I know when you add any restriction on something, you're going to decrease your desire to use whatever it is.
So, I would be the first one to jump up and say, if we realize that something is overburdened some for one of our established events that we know that we want here, they've proven themselves, I'm going to be the first one to tell you that, "Hey, we need to change this." And there's probably going to be some of those that we're going to need to make changes to. But again, there's got to be a start.
So, I mentioned this in a prior meeting, and I think 12430, what Dr. Tisdale referenced earlier, I think that has a lot of power. And I think that gives you a lot of authority and enforcement ability to stop these spontaneous, non-permanent events. And I think that gives you the ability to check for permits, shut down unsanctioned events, the authority to shut down events that are getting out of hand. I think that vests within your department the ability to help really control this. Food vendors that are setting up on the side of the road, get rid of them immediately. People that don't have outlets or events tend not to hang out in that area, right? I mean, if we didn't have, imagine Black Spring Break, Spring Break, whatever you want to call the term. Imagine that event without any food vendors, without any merchandise vendors on the beach. People would disperse quite rapidly because there's nothing for them to do or nothing to entertain their time, right? I think that gives you the most teeth out of this entire ordinance. And Peter, actually, if we could, I would like to ask you, if you could draft or have the administration draft an ordinance text change specifically to add that, while we keep debating all of the rest of this stuff, I would like to put that to a vote and allow at least Section 12430 from this proposed ordinance to be enacted and give the chief immediate authority. I think that's going to give us the most bang-for-a-buck out of all this in order to accomplish the task that we're really seeking to accomplish. So if you would just have that put together so we can review that and at least move forward on some of this, give us something to...
I mean, we...
...board with.
Yeah, we, a quick example of what you just said is Mardi Gras. Let's talk about Mardi Gras for just a second. So the first thing that a policeman does when he gets to his area during Mardi Gras is look for young people and alcohol. If he can find the young people with the alcohol, we take care of that issue right then, and then there's no problem there. And that's basically what you're saying.
Right.
But I mean, that's a standard given.
That's all I have.
To give that example.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Joe?
So, like all the vendors, people with their grocery baskets, how you prove who they are? Like at Mardi Gras? They're supposed to be under some umbrella, I know that. But how do, I mean, nobody knows. Me and I go get a grocery basket, they're selling stuff.
So currently, the way it works now is that the vendors get their vendor permit. This would be changed a little bit, but the vendors get their vendor permit through Jerry's office. And then Jerry sends us a list of the approved vendors. So, host events, it's pretty easy to determine if someone is an approved vendor, you know? First, let us see your license. You're not on the list. You know, so that part of it can be dealt with pretty easy. And if they're not a vendor, you, hey, come back next year and get your permit, like everybody else.
Yeah, and something like that is just so hard to control because you don't know if they with that group or not that group. I know one guy probably comes in, I got six of them, so they selling, you know, the trinkets like they do. But I mean, you're all coming down the parade route all over the place. I just, I don't know, some of this stuff just creates to me too much strain on the police and anybody else. I mean, Codelphos, they don't work on the weekend, so they're not going to be around. You have 85 food trucks out there. How, what they know? You don't know if they registered or not registered. And like Woody said, the permits, when you have seven, eight events, you've got to get a permit for each event? Or it just falls on the Cruisin' the Coast when they have something? How's that work for them?
Yeah. That, they're just going to apply for one permit with all of what they're doing. I mean, all their events during that time period. I mean, if the committee said, "We think that's seven events, and we're going to charge you seven times", he's got the right to, I guess, appeal, anything like that. And I think that would be corrected or modified, if need be. But that's one event. Nobody would consider that to be seven events.
All right, so even like that, a $1,000 event, y'all come with that number from where?
What's that?
You said you charge like a $1,000 an event?
Well, we started out at 15,000 total fees. I mean, I think the, I think if you knew the real numbers for the overtime fees for the police during Cruisin' the Coast, it would be surprising. We started out 15,000. We looked at other cities. Panama City has an, they don't really have a limit on what the fees would be. They just said, "We'll calculate what the fees are, and we'll tell you." And that's it. They didn't even have a cap on it. So first, we put a cap of 15. And we looked at some more, talking with different entities and different councilmen. And we talked about an amount. We want to make people comply. And so we've got a cap of 5,000, which, but they could also come and, like, they have an ask. They make an ask to the city, and we give them in-con services, and that could be dealt with as part of the overall application. We have separate agreements and ordinances and resolutions, not ordinances. We have separate agreements with, like Bill Fish and certain other Cruisin' the Coast, Mardi Gras. We have special resolutions anyway. So that would be, they'd have the right to come in and say, "We think some of that fee should be offset or waived," or whatnot.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we need to look at. I mean, could you take like, I think what even Shavis said, he's talking about over 30 million for the coast for cruising. That's like two different weekends. The Bill Fish tournament brought a bunch of millionaires in. They play, they gamble mostly, fish, and they're gone.
Yeah.
The scraping lasts, how many days y'all have? The scraping?
Three, three days.
Three days, yeah. So you don't want to lose these events because we charged a $1,000 or doing this, and run them off, let them go somewhere else. They come to Biloxi because that's where they want to be. And we want them to be there.
Correct. I mean, that's key. I'm wrong, Peter. Once an event has been approved, it's going to, it's going to, it's going to come before the council. And the council, at that point, the promoter can ask at that point. Am I not correct? They can ask at that point to reduce that. That's going to be up to y'all. I think I'm right on that.
Right.
And I know it's a burden on the police department, but if they want them, you want them in our town, then the city of Biloxi needs to step up and make sure they have enough police. I mean, that's, they're here, and we need to protect them just like anybody else. So I'm not really big on charging more for that the police did this, or the firemen had to do this. Me, I like to have the fence in town, like to support them. Me, I like to have the fence in town, like to support them. And the city needs to step up sometimes and do the right thing to make sure you take care of all the people that do the right things in the city, you know? So like that problem we had at Wool Market, Jerry, it took us, we got the advertising on the, on the phone. I sent it to Jerry. It was out there in the neighborhood, in the Nathan neighborhood. And I know he was out there for about two days trying to stop all that mess. I mean, she shouldn't have to go through that. You know, whatever she would do is wrong. As residential, it can't be commercial, you can't charge. And I mean, she just kept saying, "Well, I'm not doing this. I'm not doing that." But it took us two days to shut that down before they ever did it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I guess the only thing I have to say about it is, I'm looking at all the rules that we're looking at, and I think you guys just changed a few not long ago. I would like to just see directly the changes that we've made regarding Cruisin' the Coast, Scrapin' the Coast, and the other ones. How does these changes affect each individual group? That's something I would like to see later, later on, if you guys could get me some kind of copy of how these changes will affect these different groups. Because, you know, like I said, some of them may be okay. Some people are, based on what I'm hearing, are not happy with them. And I think that, that gives us an opportunity to vet each and every item, because I don't have a final copy of any of it myself. And I would like to see it and actually see how they affect the different groups.
Yeah, I'd like to-
That's just my take on it.
I'd propose that we correct these changes, and we have a meeting, we don't have a meeting until-
July.
11th?
July 11th, yeah. So it's several weeks from now.
Right. Unless you want to have a special meeting before then, that I would just get the changes out, and we would just put them on the next agenda, and you'd have plenty of time to look at them. But I mean, that's three weeks from now.
I guess it's enough time.
My understanding is that there's changes that are going to be made that aren't on what we have in front of us right now. Is that correct?
Right. These are changes we've worked on today, basically, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Peter, please, on that same agenda, add the 12, the language from the 12, 430.
Yeah.
Just alone, as, just in case something else fails, we can all address that one.
Yeah, that's, and I'll talk to you a little bit after. It's, it's a, a lot of that talks about if something develops into a special event where there was no permit.
Correct.
And so it, it sort of presumes that there was a permitting process that has not been followed.
Do we have any permitting process at all? Can they apply for any permit, period?
No, there's not really a permit process now at all.
Does anyone contact the chief or anybody at this point and say, hey, we're having an event, and we require certain police officers? I mean, there is-
They do.
There's, even if there's one iota of that language in, in the ordinances, I think that 12, 430 is still fine. I just want to make sure that it's clear that the, that the chief and his department have the teeth to do the few things that we really think they need to have.
I think there's a business permit, but I mean, you want to make, to make it where somebody could pay a $15 business permit and then just do whatever they wanted, then that would not be a spontaneous event. But you've got to have all the, I think you have to have all the rules in place that's not being followed. Because otherwise, it's just a $15 permit to do whatever you want.
That's still a permit, though, and I guarantee you, at, during the spring break, none of those food vendors are coming in to pay a $15 permit. None of them are paying to do anything. And if they are, then we have heads-up notice on what we need to plan for and prepare for. But it's not happening, and none of these pop-up events, they've always been able to do that. They've never done it. They're not going to do it, and that just gives chief the teeth. Now, there's a lot of, there's a lot of insecure nature by this council about passing these ordinances, and we're trying to find language that we're all comfortable with, and we're working with private groups. I just think that that one section, you could probably find unanimous support on this council for that one section. And I think it comports with, with what we want to do and what the authorities we want to give the chief. And so at, at a de minimis level, I think we should pass that. And so if we could just have that in case, we can't come to a consensus on the rest of it, at least we can come to an agreement on that one section.
Yeah, and I, I personally, I like that idea. And it may be, Peter, that all of this has to hang together, not just 12, 430, that section by itself. But if we could at least tailor it so that it could stand on its own and get, get, get it through a first and second reading, then Chief Miller could start putting that into place and start using it immediately. And these are for those spontaneous assemblage that we see in print there. It's just a thought. I think that's Robert's point. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I'll see what I can do with that.
Okay. And Peter, thank you for all your work on this, and Mr. Crew Thirts, if he was the one who did a lot of the crafting, I'm not sure, but-
He did a little.
Okay.
Okay, all hearts satisfied? Need a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Any questions?
So Chief, you know, I had one of those aha moments when that-